I am obligated to tell you, you're being audio and video recorded. And we will, we will start with a roll call, Laura. Thank you.
You are. Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor LaBarge.
Here.
Counselor Moulton. Oops.
We cannot unmute it.
Okay, let me.
I'll make them.
I think I just asked.
Oops. He's, he's still muted.
Yeah.
You know, I hit.
Got it. Got it. I am here.
You are here.
And Counselor Nash.
Here.
Excellent. So we have a quorum. So the first thing we have on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Thank you for getting those together, Laura.
Right.
I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
A new discussion or roll call?
Sure. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved. Moving swiftly to our continuation of our public hearing to alter the layout of Winter Street continued from May 11, 2022. We are actually going to change courses here. And we, because we, we, because the, the layout has been terminated without a decision, we need to close the public hearing.
I'll second that here. That motion.
So was that.
Someone to make a motion to.
Yeah. I'll move, I'll move that we close the hearing without the termination.
Thank you. And then a second from Counselor.
Yes.
Excellent. Right. Yes, Counselor Nash.
Yeah, I just want, before we close, I just want to ask the room if there's anybody who'd like to speak prior to us closing the hearing, although we are probably not moving forward with this matter. Just if somebody wants to speak and I'm not seeing anybody, so.
Thank you for pausing for that because it is a public hearing. And before we close, we would want to hear from everyone, even though this motion, you know, the original hearing purpose isn't terminated. So there's no member of the public, I would say, roll call on the motion to close the public hearing. Laura.
Counselor Maori, sure.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, so the public hearing is now closed and so I would entertain a new motion based on our, on the, on our, the new information we've received on this project. To hold on just a sec, I just lost my agenda. You know, so, so we've heard from Solicitor Seawald and we also have DPW Director LaScalia here and we could let them speak on this. What we heard Solicitor Seawald was going to join us, he might be late because he was, you know, in the in the, I believe it was the, the Board of Health meeting. So he might be here, but he did send us a letter recommending that we support the, the new course, which will be an easement on Winter Street for the purposes of drainage and snow storage and removal. So that's, that's what we would be recommending to full council, that that, that motion. If, how, how are, how are the committee members feeling? Would you like to hear from Director LaScalia or?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Welcome, Director. I'm moving fast tonight like an auctioneer. I don't know what's up with me. A little too much coffee. I'll take a breath.
Okay, thanks, Counselor. So yes, what, what we're looking to do at this point is we're looking for your positive recommendation for us to take an easement over the area in question. So this is the, the same area we've been talking about it at the dead end of Winter Street. It's roughly 33 by 70. And we need legal access to this area in order to enable us to, to put the Winter Street reconstruction project out to bid. And before we can do that, we, we need an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission and that actually has to be part of the, the bid package. So that's why we're trying to move this along. And it, you know, at this point, the abutters on either side of this 33 by 70 area owned to the center line. So in the documents that I sent earlier today, there's a, a plan and in the plan it shows parcel A and parcel B. So the parcel is, is actually split in half for the purposes of, of this discussion tonight. And each abutter owns to the center line. So what we are looking for is an easement. We're looking to take an easement over this entire area. As you said, Counselor, for the purposes of, of drainage and for the purposes of snow removal and storage. Because Winter Street is a dead end street, so we have to push the snow all the way to the end of the street and, and then store it there in order to remove it in a way that, that allows for the roadway to be de-iced. But again, the, the purposes of, of this easement is, is some housekeeping for us from a legal standpoint so that we can properly permit and, and bid this project. So I'm looking for a positive recommendation from you to go to the full council to acquire this easement.
Counselor.
I move that we issue a positive recommendation on the request for easement for drainage and snow removal.
Right.
Yes, Counselor LaBarge.
Yes. We've been told by our city solicitor, right, that we had a request that our hearing on the layout of Winter Street, Winter Street be terminated. And now Donna's coming in and talking about that our committee recommend that the city acquire drainage easements, but not to lay out a public way, correct, Donna? Correct?
Yes, that's correct. Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with my mute button. Yes, that's correct. So we're, we're not, we're, for, for our purposes, we just need an easement for drainage. We don't need to lay it out as a public way.
Okay, thank you.
Right. It seems like a more precise approach to the problem. Yeah.
So I want to thank Director LaScalia for her work trying to untangle what started as a fairly innocuous request and has become more complicated. She's worked with Attorney Seawald on this. I've talked to the neighbors most affected by the water main breaks in 2006 and 2019 who had property damage. And they, and of course, that risk remains. So they're very concerned about getting this infrastructure project done during this construction season. So I am supporting and urge us to move ahead with this expeditiously.
Right. Counselor Nash.
Yeah, I don't know if Counselor LaBarge beat me to this, but I would like to second Counselor Moulton's motion. And, and I also want to say that, you know, I'm looking at our previous, the, the documents we already had. And one of them is, let's see, what is it? It is 22.076 in order authorizing the acquisition of easements to alter the layout of Winter Street. And I think that it just in terms of, so we don't seem like we're going completely you know, making stuff up out of whole cloth. We have this, this order that was sent to us and that what we'd like, we'd like to send, I'm going to propose that we, we alter your motion, Counselor Moulton, to, to say that we want to send this order back to council
Yes.
with a positive recommendation, less the layout that, because this is talking about easements and so, and, and I think that relates to what Counselor LaBarge's point was as well. So I, I think this, I, I like that it keeps everything nice and neat that we're actually dealing with the, with the legislation rather than it's not new legislation. We're, we're actually, ultimately what this was about was getting the easement so we could get the street done. So that would be.
I, I accept that. I accept that language and that's entirely correct.
Okay, cool.
And you second your own amendment there, Counselor Nash, right?
Yeah, so am I. Yeah, I guess. That's right. As long as Laura can follow what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we lose Laura, we're in trouble because we, you know, out of the woods of municipal governance rules. That sound, that's, that makes sense to me. That, that's, that's great because we're kind of building on what's there and okay. And this is, yeah, this is, you know, this is very time sensitive since so I'm glad we're moving on this because we don't really know when these drainage problems will, you know, hit a critical place. Yes, Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, and I also think you have the language from our city solicitor. And it says it exactly what this is all about. We heard Donna LaScalia talk just a little while ago about the 33 by 70 and the easement over the entire area of, and drainage. Okay? And this is exactly what your language is stating, which Counselor Nash just repeated again. And that's what he's asking us to charge as our committee to send to city council.
That's right. So yes, Counselor Nash.
Yeah, and I just want to say, underline why we want to send this with a positive recommendation. We were charged with doing a public hearing. We, we've done that. We've heard from folks. And clearly, everybody wants this to move forward and get resolved. I know that there's the, the NiBORS would like it resolved as well. They, they may be moving a little bit slower than, or, you know, the rest of the neighbors want this done pronto. And so I, I'm comfortable with, you know, this, moving this with a positive recommendation back to council.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, yes, Director.
I, I just want to add that there may be some revision that's needed. I just want to add that there may be some revision that's needed to the actual language of the easement to to make it more specific, which will be done before it goes back to council for the second time. So I just want to add that I've had that conversation with the city solicitor. And there will there will likely be some minor revisions to that language. So hopefully, that's not problematic to this committee.
Right now, we can just we can revisit the language and you can point it pointed out when it comes to full council. But I, yeah, I'm comfortable with this. Are we?
Okay, and I'm sorry, Counselor, just one more thing that I want to let this committee know is is that we do have an opinion of value on this parcel from the the city's assessor. And so we will be paying damages, it's called damages, to each a butter in the amount of $1,000. So each of the abutters on either side of this parcel will each receive $1,000 from the city for this easement.
Okay.
Oh, that's very good information.
Yeah, it is.
Any other comments from counselors, directors? If not, we do have a motion on the floor and a second. So we could do a roll call. Thank you, Laura.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Molton.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, so that it will go to City Council with a positive recommendation. And I'm just, I guess we are, there's nothing else on the agenda besides any new business or we didn't have any financial orders. So if there's no new business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Molton.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And we are so adjourned. And I will go meet the other eighth grade parents, and we are going to practice singing "Don't Stop Believin'".